Okay. Thank you. Welcome to the June 8th, 2021 meeting of the Hop Dog Union Free School District Board of Education. Tonight is our business and community meeting. Before we begin with the agenda, just a couple of notes about the structure of tonight. We have a lot of awards to give out to students. We have a lot of retirees to acknowledge. So we're going to skip or go right to that. And after the students are recognized, we'll take a five-minute break, let anyone leave that wants to leave. We'll do the same thing after the retirements. Yeah, I know, I got it. After the retirement announcements, and then after that, we'll continue with the rest of the meeting. Can Ella, Lily, and Johnny Murphy join me up here? For those that don't know, these are Dr. Murphy's beautiful children. And I'm going to ask that everyone rise and that they join us in the Pledge of Allegiance that will be read by the Murphy children.
I pledge allegiance.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Hold on.
I pledge allegiance.
Hang on, guys. All right, there you go. Start again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, skipping right to number five on the agenda, recognition and awards or recognitions and awards. Dr. Probst.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, it is my honor to recognize the top graduates in the class of 2021. These students have earned grade degree point averages of 100 or greater. And ladies and gentlemen, that is only the beginning of their very impressive stories. These students are outstanding athletes, musicians, singers, dancers, and artists. They are humanitarians who find ways to make our school and our community better. They solve calculus problems before most adults are even at work in the morning, and they do it all with a smile. I'm not sure how they fit it all in or when they sleep. And judging from the time of night, they sometimes send me emails. I don't actually think they sleep at all. I'm convinced they might not. But in short, they're basically superheroes. And we're going to find some slides. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Elmer. Top graduates in the class of 2021, you're a significant group for me because you were entering ninth grade when I started in this role in the district. And because you're about to graduate, I'm going to let you in on a little secret, which is that when I got here, you had a little bit of a reputation. People told me you were very smart, very accomplished, very intense, and very competitive. And they were absolutely right. I happen to find all of those characteristics to be great qualities, so we've gotten along very well over the years. You were eager, front and center, for every initiative Dr. O'Hara and I created when it came to college admissions and post-secondary planning. You visited colleges with us. You took the PSAT, the SAT, and the ACT during the school day. You were here in the summer for Camp College. You took advantage of financial aid and college essay assistance. You didn't let anything get in your way, not even a global pandemic. You didn't just succeed, quite honestly, you broke records. You took more honors, AP and IB courses than any top group of students before you. And you achieved with AP, Scholar, and IB Diploma candidate status as proof. Four of you earned perfect scores on the ACT, a first in Hop Dog. And all of you scored 30 or higher, also a first. And where college application results are concerned, you've written an entirely new chapter in Hop Dog history. With acceptances to more highly selective schools than any graduating class prior, five of you will attend Ivy League schools, another first in Hop Dog. Many of you receive scholarship offers that will make your education at prestigious universities nearly free. Over the course of the past four years, I've gotten to know so much more about you than your reputation for being smart and competitive. You are also kind, thoughtful, creative, and collaborative. The future of this world is very bright, and I am certain of that because I see the future in all of you. At this time, I'll call up each top graduate individually. Dr. O'Hara is ready with a top grad photo for you, and then you can return to your seat. We do have a couple of students who weren't able to attend tonight, but I'm going to call all names so that they can be recognized by the community. First is Vivian Chen, who will attend the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. Next is Melody Chang, who will attend the University of Pennsylvania. Catherine Dulcie will attend Northeastern University. Vincent Girardi will attend Princeton University. Colin Happy will attend Binghamton University. Luca Ailenardi will attend Brown University. Sri Varshini Karthikayan will attend the Cooper Union. Emily Kelly will attend the University of California at Los Angeles, more commonly known Danielle Lu will attend the University of Pennsylvania. Andrew Marini will attend Wesleyan University. Jelaj Mehta will attend Columbia University. Melissa Oliver will attend Stevens Institute of Technology. Nicole Petroselli will also attend Stevens Institute of Technology. Shivani Rao will attend Stony Brook University. Tyler Rutley will attend the University at Buffalo. Noah Schwartzaffel will attend Stony Brook University. Alexander Vasilikopoulos will attend Emory University. And Emma Vasilikopoulos will attend Rice University. To wrap up, congratulations to our top graduates. Congratulations. Oh, I'm so sorry, Emma. Oh, my gosh. Lastly, congratulations to Mr. Cook, the team at the high school, especially the high school counselors, and all of the K-12 faculty and staff who worked with these students over the years. And last but never least, thank you and congratulations to the parents and families of these students for putting your trust in us to work with your children on this very important journey. It's been an absolute privilege, and I thank you.
At this... Hello. All right, there we go. We'll take a five-minute break right now to let anyone that wants to leave before the next portion of our meeting to take off, and we will reconvene at exactly 8:20. Thank you, and congratulations to you all. (applause) All right, skipping right to number five on the agenda, recognition and awards or recognitions and awards. Dr. Probst.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, it is my honor to recognize the top graduates in the class of 2021. These students have earned grade degree point averages of 100 or greater. And ladies and gentlemen, that is only the beginning of their very impressive stories. These students are outstanding athletes, musicians, singers, dancers, and artists. They are humanitarians who find ways to make our school and our community better. They solve calculus problems before most adults are even at work in the morning, and they do it all with a smile. I'm not sure how they fit it all in or when they sleep. And judging from the time of night, they sometimes send me emails. I don't actually think they sleep at all. I'm convinced they might not. But in short, they're basically superheroes. And we're going to find some slides. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Elmer. Top graduates in the class of 2021, you're a significant group for me because you were entering ninth grade when I started in this role in the district. And because you're about to graduate, I'm going to let you in on a little secret, which is that when I got here, you had a little bit of a reputation. People told me you were very smart, very accomplished, very intense, and very competitive. And they were absolutely right. I happen to find all of those characteristics to be great qualities, so we've gotten along very well over the years. You were eager, front and center, for every initiative Dr. O'Hara and I created when it came to college admissions and post-secondary planning. You visited colleges with us. You took the PSAT, the SAT, and the ACT during the school day. You were here in the summer for Camp College. You took advantage of financial aid and college essay assistance. You didn't let anything get in your way, not even a global pandemic. You didn't just succeed, quite honestly, you broke records. You took more honors, AP and IB courses than any top group of students before you. And you achieved with AP, Scholar, and IB Diploma candidate status as proof. Four of you earned perfect scores on the ACT, a first in Hop Dog. And all of you scored 30 or higher, also a first. And where college application results are concerned, you've written an entirely new chapter in Hop Dog history. With acceptances to more highly selective schools than any graduating class prior, five of you will attend Ivy League schools, another first in Hop Dog. Many of you receive scholarship offers that will make your education at prestigious universities nearly free. Over the course of the past four years, I've gotten to know so much more about you than your reputation for being smart and competitive. You are also kind, thoughtful, creative, and collaborative. The future of this world is very bright, and I am certain of that because I see the future in all of you. At this time, I'll call up each top graduate individually. Dr. O'Hara is ready with a top grad photo for you, and then you can return to your seat. We do have a couple of students who weren't able to attend tonight, but I'm going to call all names so that they can be recognized by the community. First is Vivian Chen, who will attend the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. Next is Melody Chang, who will attend the University of Pennsylvania. Katherine Dulcie will attend Northeastern University. Vincent Girardi will attend Princeton University. Colin Happy will attend Binghamton University. Luca Ailenardi will attend Brown University. Sri Varshini Karthikayan will attend the Cooper Union. Emily Kelly will attend the University of California at Los Angeles, more commonly known as UCLA. Danielle Lu will attend the University of Pennsylvania. Andrew Marini will attend Wesleyan University. Jelaj Mehta will attend Columbia University. Melissa Oliver will attend Stevens Institute of Technology. Nicole Petroselli will also attend Stevens Institute of Technology. Shivani Rao will attend Stony Brook University. Tyler Rutley will attend the University at Buffalo. Noah Schwartzaffel will attend Stony Brook University. Alexandra Vasilikopoulos will attend Emory University. And Emma Vasilikopoulos will attend Rice University. To wrap up, congratulations to our top graduates. Congratulations... Oh, I'm so sorry, Emma. Oh, my gosh. Congratulations. Lastly, congratulations to Mr. Cook, the team at the high school, especially the high school counselors, and all of the K-12 faculty and staff who worked with these students over the years. And last but never least, thank you and congratulations to the parents and families of these students for putting your trust in us to work with your children on this very important journey. It's been an absolute privilege, and I thank you.
At this... Hello. All right, there we go. We'll take a five-minute break right now to let anyone that wants to leave before the next portion of our meeting to take off, and we will reconvene at exactly 8:20. Thank you, and congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Stand up. Please stand up. (inaudible). Hey. How'd you know what I was going to ask you? You can tell.
Steve, will we back up? 5B on the agenda... I'm sorry. 5A2 on the agenda are our retirements. Mr. Tasman?
Thank you, Mr. Barshay. Dr. Murphy's going to help me, like my Vanowite here, to hand out some plaques, some deserving plaques. At this time, I'd like to call up our administrative team who's in the audience to help us honor our retirees who are here. Thank you. Look at this group. So, I'm going to ask, like, very spread out right here. Thank you very much. For our retirees who are attending tonight, this is all for you, right here. Our administrative team is here tonight to thank you. I want to thank the Board of Education, Dr. O'Hara, for giving me this privilege tonight to stand here before you and honor our incredible retirees who've worked their whole career, many of them their whole career here, 30, some of them 30-plus years, working in our school district, dedicating their life and their profession to our students. Before this, the first presentation, you saw the incredible talents of our students get recognized. That doesn't happen without the staff that we're going to recognize tonight as retirees and the administrative staff who's up here tonight before you. So let's give them a round of applause. So what a difference a year makes. Last year, I think we did this presentation and this recognition. I was sitting at my desk on a computer, and we didn't get a chance to do it. So it's amazing that we're here tonight and so thankful that we are to recognize these incredible retirees who, again, have dedicated their time to our district, and they deserve the gift of retirement. In speaking with these retirees, it's incredible when we have our exit interviews, they all have the same sentiment. They love working here at Hop Dog. They love working here. And to me, as you're talking to our retirees, as they're looking for a next, going through their next step in their lives, when you think about working in a place that you love, how incredible, the incredible work that you can do when you're in a place that you love working. And these retirees definitely set the bar for that, so thank you. We had 33 retirees in all this year, a large group. We have 11 that are here tonight. If I do miss anyone, please, we'll get a chance to call you up, but I'm going to recognize the first 11 to come up here, get their plaque from Dr. Murphy, and get celebrated by our administrative team. Walk across the line. You're here tonight, you got a lot of service here, we're going to get you up, we're going to get you up the steps, you're going to walk across like it's graduation, okay? So let's start. First, our tech teacher, Mr. Tom Buchi, 35 years of service. Special education teacher, 25 years of service, Lori Buell. This guy never walks by you without saying hello and asking you how your day is going. I had to say that because she's such a ball of energy and positivity. Don Sumato, custodial worker. Donnie, come on up. The guy's got the best hair ever.
Thanks. Thank you.
Don, we're letting you see this next one. Next up is a former colleague of mine. I have to jump on the mic here. Everybody knows this incredible individual. She's worked in the district for, let's see here, 18 years in a variety of roles, last of which was in my office. I love her to death, we all do. Katherine Classy, please come on up.
Judy, come on up. Good to see you, Judy. All right. A monitor, 18 years of service, Terri Strappoli. Terri here? Yes, she is. Terri. Yes. Give her another round of applause. I believe this is the last staff member who's in attendance. This is my time. Dr. Murphy had his opportunity to recognize Katherine. Sharon Omata, who is, works in the personnel office, and she's my right hand, my left hand, my right foot, my left foot, does everything you can possibly imagine. Little today, coming here and organizing these plaques. She's going to be really missed, but we're so, so, so happy for her to be moving on and enjoying her grandchildren and her retirement. So Sharon, congratulations, Sharon Omata. Are there any other retirees in the audience? And I only ask that because we did ask that everybody tell us if they're coming, but I don't want to miss anyone. Perfect, okay. So I just want to read the names of the additional retiring staff. Marie Barry, teaching assistant. Robin Burpee, teaching assistant. Mary Bragg, school nurse. Michelle Cassans, science teacher. Maria Cohen-Eiffel, teaching assistant. Cindy Gallo, teaching assistant. Linda Katsiotis, E and L teacher. Cheryl Napolitano, teaching assistant. Debbie Steinman, elementary teacher. Patricia Termine, teaching assistant. Laura Weinstein, teaching assistant. If you know any teaching assistants, please tell them to apply. Susan Unziata, monitor. Michelle Cloke, secretary, clerical. Richard Strishling, monitor. Tim Kuehl, microcomputer repair tech. Joanne Lawler, clerical. Ruth Maxwell, clerical. Janet Malizen, monitor. Kathy Norton, clerical. Marge Powers, clerical. Mickey Procaccini, custodial worker. Mike Spear, chief custodian. And our last retiree to bring us into 2021-22, forty-six years of service for the school district, June Rush. And thank you all to our administrative team, to everybody who's here, and again, congratulations Thank you and congratulations. Before we break, we're going to pull forward one item off the consent agenda, 7.2A 2.1, which is the appointment to tenure of employees of the district. I'll ask, I'll ask Dr. O'Hara to make the announcement.
Good evening. If I, when I read your name, please stand. Lisa Aquilino. Joe Chira. Stephanie Ebinger. Please, please remain standing. Marjorie Fay. Brett Groneman. Geraldine Hughes. Jerry Lynn Hughes, excuse me. Kristen Kelly. You know, this is about all of them tonight, but I will pause just to say this guy, Tim McCarthy, I've actually hired him three times now in my career. He's like a bad penny. Jessica Visander. And Joseph Whitehorst. Yeah, whom we affectionately refer to as Joseph Workhorse. So just, I'd like to make a brief statement about this group and about tenure in general. Tenure is by far the most important recommendation that any superintendent can make for the, for obvious reasons. I can tell you that every teacher and administrator strives to make a difference and leave a lasting legacy over the course of his or her career. This evening, I'm most proud to have this group of dedicated, passionate, and most deserving teachers, teaching assistants, and administrators be part of my legacy in the HopHog School District. So to all of the people up for tenure this evening, please accept my heartfelt congratulations on a job well done and my expectation that you will continue for many years to serve the students of HopHog to the best of your ability.
Thank you. With that, hold applause for a minute. Thank you. With that, I will take a motion to approve the appointment to tenure upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dr. O'Hara. Mr. Buscarino with the motion, Ms. Weisberg seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. And with that, we will take a five-minute break. We will reconvene at eight forty-five exactly.
Thank you, welcome back. Just a quick note about the remainder of the agenda. Number six, which will be called in a moment, is for questions and comments concerning tonight's agenda only. At the end of the meeting, which will come pretty quick, is the time where we open it to the floor for comments concerning anything related to the district whatsoever, whether it's on the agenda or not. Five C on the agenda is the adoption of minutes from the business meeting and board hearing of May 4th, 2021. Mr. Buscarino makes the motion. Mrs. Weisberg seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Seven-zero. Questions and comments from the community concerning tonight's agenda only? Yes, if you, whoever has a question, if you could come up to this mic so the people at home could hear you. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Seven point three, let me move back. E and F. It refers to an agreement, but no agreement is attached.
Seven point three E and F? Ms. Pirro?
Seven point one. Did I say one or three? I'm sorry.
I thought you said seven point three, I'm sorry. Seven point one.
I'm sorry, seven point one, E and F.
E and F. Oh, so there are no agreements yet concerning that. So both of those appointments, if they pass, will be subject to an agreement, which will then be brought at a new board meeting for the public to hear and for the board to vote on.
Okay, so we will see it? Can you tell us how many, your term?
No, none of that, yes, so.
Oh, okay, everything?
Let me, I'll try to answer your question. So E and F concern the appointments of Dr. Murphy and Mr. Tasman. There are no contracts for that as of yet, there are no terms or term as of yet. All of that is subject to negotiation. But like every contract we have with people that work for the district, it will be voted on in public and it will be posted on the website for public view.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bruzzo?
If you could, well, it's all right.
Seven point E, we can get those names and interview for that position?
Seven point...
Seven point one.
Seven point one E, and the question is whether you can get the names of the people that interviewed?
Yeah, if you...
Yeah, the answer unfortunately is no. Those unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know, are subject to confidentiality and probably for good reason because we've had, and we had, a lot of people apply for those positions that are employed elsewhere, and giving those names out would, I think, probably endanger their jobs where they are. So no, we're not allowed to give those names out.
Seven point one F, the title.
Seven point one F? As to Mr. Tasman?
Yeah, no, just the position of the deputy superintendent.
Yes.
Explain how you guys came up with that, why you decided to add another position in that title?
Yep, so we're not...
What, what, the benefits of having that title on, on the table?
Yep, so the district's been without a deputy since Mr. Stuccio left some time ago. Mr. Tasman will remain and retain the duties that he's had with us. It's not an additional position, although it is a title and a sign of recognition, and you're spoiling the surprise a little bit, but Mr. Tasman will be second in charge. That's the significance of the title deputy.
Well, there is a benefit to it, to the benefit that we sent out a deputy, right?
I couldn't hear you.
There's a benefit because fifty-one percent of the work is done in another title, you're granting tenure.
No, 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 that, the purpose of that language there is to indicate that Mr. Tasman doesn't have to reapply for his tenure as the deputy, because more than fifty-one percent of the duties that he does now will also be done while he's the deputy. It's actually a hundred percent of the duties are the same. He doesn't have to reapply for tenure to be deputy. His tenure carries over.
Basically, the same tenure time?
I'm sorry?
Same tenure time?
See, well, he's already tenured, it's just he doesn't, he doesn't lose his tenure and have to reapply for tenure. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not technically, although technically the title is new, it's not a new position. He's keeping one hundred percent of the duties he's been doing and will probably add another fifty percent on top of that. top of that. And he doesn't go through probation. And I'm sorry, Ms. Tasman, but you won't be seeing him at home. Okay, any other questions? Yes. Ms. Maida?
So this probably is my last board meeting, and since we recognize the students this year, I wanted to say a few words. So our family has been part of the Hopock School District for the past 20 years, and I have had two kids, Varun and Jalaj. I hope you can hear me, that have really succeeded in the efforts that the board has put in and a lot of teachers and administrations have put in. And as a family, I really, really want to be thankful from the bottom of the heart with all the effort that has been put by everybody here. And I just want to say like a couple of words and recognize the student in front of the board and in front of the community that how much efforts they, some of the administrators, and of course, a lot of teachers have put in, if that's okay. So Mr. Vanck Miller, who is a science teacher, he has been extremely supportive to both my kids and of course, to a lot of students as a science research endeavor that he has brought off. And I'm taking my mask off because I can't read. And the various courses that he has made available to the students during the course that he has been here. I'm just going to say two sentences. So I'm very thankful for him that the way he has come up in the 20 years of his career in the school district. I'm also very thankful to Dr. Murphy, who I have seen being as a director of math, where we have had multiple conversations and fight over a lot of courses that he bought to the school. Then from being to the assistant to now the superintendent, so welcome to you. And congrats and thank you again from the bottom of my heart. Mrs. O'Connor, who has been the high school principal throughout the career of both my teachers, she has helped in creating a lot of matrices for my kids because they always ended up taking like weird courses. And she had to sit down on the board and always come up with a matrix to kind of accommodate the courses that she took, that they took. So thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. I even miss Probs in the span of time that she has been here in the students' activities that she brought here, all the ACT courses, the summer courses, and on one-on-one that she made every child feel very, very special. It has really, really been like, you know, she has really been there for the students and my kids also. And I will really miss her, and she has become a good friend over the years. Thank you, Mrs. Probs. Mrs. Bontara, who is a great counselor, both my kids, she has been there as a counselor. She really, really takes the personal effort in every student to bring them up and take special interest in every child. And I don't think I would have been here without the counselor. Even Ms. Carolyn Hack, and this is something that Jalaj has specifically written for all the students, all the teachers, and he wanted me to bring this out in front of the board. I'll just take two more minutes, not that much time. Mrs. Carolyn Hack, she is a brilliant teacher and has always been there for both my kids. She has devoted most of her own time to the students' success and also devoted a lot of her time during the extracurricular activities. The second is Mrs. Brian Gillen. He truly represents what all teachers should strive to be, someone who will put all the efforts in the improvement of the students while doing, broadening their worldview, much as he did with Jalaj, really broadened his worldview. Mr. Harry Shahegan, he has been there incredible for both the kids also. Jalaj has worked with him for four years and built up the Model UN club from ground up in the school district. And he has been an integral part of Jalaj's journey after playing and really taught him what a leadership role is supposed to play. So thank you, Mr. Shahegan. Two more to go, Mrs. Dawn Lynch. She's simply a strong, despite so much of issues that are going on with her own life, she's always been there for the students and she has taught Jalaj a lot about compassion. And of course, there are many, many other teachers that I would like to talk about. There is one more teacher that Jalaj mentioned, Mr. Brett Groxman. He says that he is one of the most enjoyable teachers to be in the school, and he is one of the better exemplified ideal of how to interact with the students. So there are many, many other teachers, Mr. Superintendent, Dr. O'Hara, I'm going to miss you too. And the board, of course, I am going to miss the whole board over here. Dr. Barshay, Dr. Fortmeyer, whoever I have dealt with. And I'm really very emotional right now leaving the Hopock School District because this is my last year, and as you all know, he has gone to Columbia University. And I want to tell all the students out there that if you're motivated, you can do it. You don't have to be in a certain school district to do what you want to do. So thank you from the bottom of the high heart to the Hopock community, and it has been a great 20 years in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Just have one question regarding seven point one B?
Seven point one?
B?
E, yes.
No, B isn't boy.
B isn't boy, yes.
Regarding the sale of district office?
Yes.
Will the community be voting on that as well?
100%. So the sale of any building, and especially the district office building, Whippa Will, will be subject to multiple public hearings where the public will get to speak and be heard as to whether they think it's a good idea or not that the building be sold. And then ultimately, the voters vote on whether to sell the building or not once we finish all the public hearings. So absolutely, there'll be a time for public participation and debate, and then the ultimate decision will be the communities.
And just to keep in mind also, I know even like it was a challenge with the meet the candidates, Mike, the people that don't have children in the district, if we can come up with a way to inform them as well.
Yeah, so.
I know it was a challenge with us with the meet the candidates.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll do our best, and the developer is going to foot the bill for notifying the community, but we'll make sure we do our best to let everyone know. We'll use multiple media, multiple avenues of communication with the community. And the more people that come out and be heard, the better for the board. You know, we want to be informed on what the community wants, so you know, we have the same goal as far as that goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further questions and comments from anyone concerning tonight's agenda? Thank you. The consent agenda, number seven on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do any members have any items that they would like to have removed?
Mr. Barshay, I'd like to sever seven point one D.
Seven point one?
D? And seven point two A three, sir?
Seven point? Two A three? Any others?
Yes.
Mr. Buscarino?
I'd like to remove seven point two C two, please.
Seven point two C two? I will sever? Seven point one E? And seven point one F? Any other items that members would like to have severed or removed from the consent agenda? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, lest those items that have been removed and lest the tenure appointments which have previously been voted on. Mr. Buscarino makes the motion. Mrs. Weisberg seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Seven point? Moving to the severed, severed item, seven point one D severed by Mr. Scarito. I'll make a motion to table seven point one D. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Scarito. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven point one D is tabled. I'll ask that the clerk be advised to put that item on our next business meeting agenda. Seven point two A three severed by Mr. Scarito. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fortmeyer, thank you. Mr. Buscarino with the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes five zero two. Mr. Barshay and Mr. Scarito abstaining. Seven point two C two removed by Ms. Buscarino. Motion by Ms. Weisberg, second by Mr. Scarito. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes five zero two. Mr. Barshay and Mr. Buscarino abstaining. Seven point? Seven point one E and F, which I severed, are the appointments of Dr. Murphy and Mr. Tasman as our superintendent and deputy superintendent respectively. Before we get to those, just a couple of brief words from me concerning departing administrators that have been with us for the last more than a couple of years and have been integral to our successes over the last few years. First of all, Dr. Probst is leaving us to become the superintendent of West Hampton Beach. I want to wish her, on behalf of the board, the best of luck. I hope she has some success there, not, not too much. But you know, Ms. Probst has been instrumental in improving the post-secondary outcomes of our students. We've seen our application rate and the level of schools that our kids have gotten into just skyrocket under her guidance. So thank you for your service, Dr. Probst, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying thank you.
Oh, you're, you're very welcome. And Ms. Piero is also leaving us for West Hampton Beach. We are sad to see her go, but we wish her all the best. She has been hardcore business official in some really, really difficult times over the last couple of years. Stood, you know, feet to the fire and at the end of the day, always stuck to her guns as to what she thought was best for Hopock and the students. So again, we wish you almost all the luck in, in West Hampton, and we're sad to see you go. Couple more departures, or deportations? Departures, thank you. I want to first of all congratulate Mrs. Capice and Ms. Salvia, if you don't mind standing, who were elected to the Board of Education, beginning a three-year term July 1. Congratulations. And just a couple of words that I'd like to say about Mr. Buscarino, who's departing us. And I know Mr. Scarito wants to say a couple of words about Mrs. Weisberg, but Michael, we're, we're better for having you here in the last six years. From the president's point of view, you were sounding board for me. Sometimes when I'm going a little crazy, you always, you know, rationalized what the right thing to do was and is, and especially your insight, being a sergeant in the police department, your insight as to the security issues that the school has faced over the years is going to be very, very hard to replace. But you know, hopefully, we can continue to use you as a resource in those regards. The students and faculty of the school district were safer with you here and with your innovative ideas as far as security goes. Thank you for your service over the last six years. You will be missed, Michael. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Barshay. Stacy, Stacy, I just want to say thank you, especially to your husband and to your two girls. Six years now, you've given a lot of services to the community, and we appreciate it. You taught me a lot of things I did not know about teachers and their perspective, sometimes as a parent and sometimes as a board member. You get to look at teachers, I'm still more worried about the community side of it. So I thank you for that. You taught me a lot. I hope you enjoy your time off now, and we may still call on you for other stuff, but I really want to thank you for all your time. So thank you very much.
Okay. Concerning the appointment of our new superintendent, I want to first thank and acknowledge Dr. Dennis O'Hara for his leadership over the last five years. Again, the district saw new heights under your tutelage. We reached new heights under your guidance. And again, the students were better for you having been our superintendent over the last five years. Dr. O'Hara is, is moving on to ISLIP. We wish him again all the best, a little bit, right? But you know, this board hired Dr. O'Hara. We did make a, I think, a great decision. He fulfilled everything that we asked, brought the district again to new heights, and we're grateful for your hard work and dedication over the last five years.
Mr. Barshay, I would just like to tell the board, thank you very much. Returning to Hopock, if you may not know, I was an administrator in Hopock in 1998 through 2003. And there was a 13-year absence while I was principal at Oyster Bay High School. Returning to the Hopock School District to be the superintendent was a dream come true for me, and I'd like to thank you and the Board of Education for making that dream come true. And I would like to thank my colleagues in central office, Dr. Murphy, Mr. Tasman, Dr. Probst, Mrs. Piero. Any success that we may have had was, was not done single-handedly. And I know the district is in good hands moving forward, so congratulations to my two colleagues. And again, thank you to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hara. Okay, seven point one E on the agenda is the appointment of Dr. Donald Murphy as superintendent of schools for the Hopock Union Free School District effective July 1, 2021, subject to negotiation and vote, voting upon his contract for employment. Let's, let's, I'll call the vote, and then I have a few words to say about Dr. Murphy. I'll, I'll make the motion. Mr. Scarito seconds. Discussion? So Dr. Murphy, where are you? Blinded by the lights here. Dr. Murphy, we are beyond excited to be under your guidance and steady hand. You know, when you and I are in a room together, you know, I always feel like you're the second smartest guy there, and we're lucky to, we're lucky to have you. You know, this district, over the last year and a half, you know, with the COVID pandemic and epidemic, Dr. Murphy really was, along with central office and the teachers, but Dr. Murphy really was the architect of our distance learning plan, if you even want to call that, because we were one of the few districts on Long Island to be in person from day one. That would not have been possible without all administration and our teachers, but really, you know, Dr. Murphy, that was his brainchild, and he, he got everyone on board and really proved that he is going to be a leader among leaders and bring this district even higher than we are now. It is my pleasure to call the vote to appoint Dr. Murphy. With that, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, seven zero. Congratulations, Dr. Murphy. Don, if you want to say a few words, don't forget to thank your wife.
So thank you so much, Mr. Barshay. I'm kind of take a few moments here, if I may, and just reflect on this moment. And I'm going to start, Mr. Buscarino, Stacy, Mike, I should say, Stacy, don't need to be that formal, Jim, Larry, Gary, Rob as vice president, and Dave as president. You set the tone, Dave, for the whole board. I'm humbled and incredibly lucky to be sitting here. I'm humbled and incredibly lucky to be sitting here. By tone, I mean that I've yet to, in my six years working with the board, have a moment where if we can't, if we distill a decision down to what's best for kids, I always see seven zero from this Board of Ed. And that's the tone you set for me and for the entire district. The process to get here, again, set by the board, was so worthwhile. I just want to acknowledge Mr. Nelson and Katie Lloyd, Mrs. Bilske, Mrs. Gordon from HAP, Mrs. Olachaya from PTA Council, and Mr. Giacchetti representing HTA. You definitely asked a lot of good questions along the way, along with the board, and I feel I'm better off for it, sitting here tonight, going through the process. Dr. O'Hara, Dennis, thank you. Your support and mentorship has made me a better administrator and leader. You've helped me the last few weeks in particular, so that we don't miss a beat. When I begin on July 1st, the transition will be that much easier with your support. So, thank you so much, Dennis, for everything, and of course, the rest of my central office colleagues. You may have heard some noises in the front. I have my three children here tonight, Ella, Lily, and Johnny, and I have my sister Jill here, my mom is here, you won't see her, she's four foot 11, so she's not going to be too tall in the seat there. My other sister is, my sister Jill's here, my sister Patty is watching on YouTube, my nephew Joey's here. I've got lots of people watching, and I just could not be here without the support from my family, and in particular, without Mr. Barshay's nudge, my wife Selena, who's my rock, who's my support and who believes in this mission of HopHog as a home away from home. We intend to integrate our family into this community even more. That is what I think it takes to be a successful superintendent, is that the community believes that I view each and every student as a member of my own family, and so I'm so grateful to have my family here tonight. And I'll just add a little anecdote, that I got into this career after a previous career. I come from a family of educators. My father was a principal, was a teacher, and then a principal in Long Beach. He passed away before I became a Catholic school teacher. That was my first gig, and I think it's pretty cool to sit here tonight, and I have a little bit of chills thinking about how he would look at this moment, so I just want to recognize my dad. And then lastly, I just want to say to the, directly to the parents and the students of HopHog, you know, our work, we're, of course, looking to end this challenging year on a high note. We have a lot to be proud of, but just so you know, beginning July 1, I'm looking to be a thoughtful, approachable leader amongst the whole team, leading with passion and perspective and purpose, and most of all, getting ready for next year, for the new school year, and the biggest goal and dream will be that the kids return to school with excitement in their eyes and that energy that we all love about the school experience, in particular here in HopHog. Again, a home away from home for me. So, again, thank you so much, Mr. Barshay and the whole board, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Seven point one E, rather, F on the agenda is the appointment of Mr. Joe Tasman to the position of deputy superintendent of schools. He will wear two hats in that position, one as the deputy, and second, maintaining his current position as or in charge of personnel. So, all right, let's call the motion first. I'll make the motion, Mr. Scrito, seconds. Discussion, you know, Mr. Abruzzo, you asked me earlier if we could tell you the names of the individuals that applied for the position. I don't mind telling you, and I doubt he minds either. Mr. Tasman also applied for the position. Mr. Tasman blew us away at the interviews, blew the committee away at the interviews, and gave the committee hours of fits to determine and to decide between Mr. Tasman and Dr. Murphy as our, as our next superintendent. Mr. Tasman has gone at this district from our, from a gym teacher to an athletic director to assistant superintendent, and now to the deputy, which is, you know, the penultimate position within the schools. Mr. Tasman is a leader and team builder like I've never seen in my career. I don't know, you know, you say it often, can't say a bad thing about the guy. You literally can't say a bad thing about Mr. Tasman. Perhaps he's a little too handsome, but, you know, it is true, right? So, you know, we are so lucky to have this guy. I think if you sliced him open, he'd bleed HopHog blue. He is as loyal to this district as anyone. We are lucky to have him, and we're looking forward to him being here for a very, very long time, continue to be here for a very, very long time, and congratulations to you, Mr. Tasman. I'll take a vote to appoint Mr. Tasman as deputy. Motion's been made. Any, all those in favor? Seven zero. Congratulations, Joe. And don't forget to thank your wife.
Wow. First, Don did a great job. You said everything I was going to say, I think, in my head, but you did an incredible job as a superintendent. Can everybody hear me? I could talk louder, I think, without the mic, but first, thank you, Mr. Barshay. That was a beautiful introduction, and I appreciate it beyond, beyond words, that I don't have the words to say how much I appreciate it, but I want to thank the Board of Education and the committee, who put in so much time and so much effort to find the next leader of this school district. And you guys, with all your work and effort, you found the right person. I will say, Dr. Murphy, working side by side with Dr. Murphy for the last 10 years, first when he was a director of math and information systems, and now as an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and technology. His leadership and his work ethic and his dedication to this school district is unparalleled, and I'm looking forward to working with him the next, for the rest of my career, here side by side. I want to thank Dr. O'Hara. I couldn't not thank him and leave here without thanking him for his mentorship and his leadership and having his thoughtful ear in every situation and every, in every road I've had to take, so I want to thank you for that, always being patient. Welcome, Dennis. And then also the, everybody, my wife and my daughter, I think they could say a couple of bad things about me, Mr. Barshay, but, you know, honestly, when I came here, I have some students in the audience, so it's nice that I'm here to share, you're able to share this with me tonight, because when I came in here in 1995, as a physical educator, Dr. Mr. Barshay, not a gym teacher, a physical education teacher, I never in a million years thought that I would be in this position. My whole life, my dream was to be a phys ed teacher and a coach, that's all I ever wanted, but the people in this community, from the students, the parents, administrators, teachers, people who believed in me to push me to do more, really put me in the spot that I'm in right now. So, I'm so grateful, eternally grateful to the board for recognizing that work, eternally grateful for this community, and we've got really, really great things to continue doing in this district, and we're going to get there and keep getting there. This is an incredible place. I'm going to end it here, because I can ramble on. My last thought is, for 26 years, this has been my second home in my life, and my daughters can tell you, my daughters being at every homecoming and coming to baseball games when they were two years old in HopHog sweatshirts, so this has been a home for our family, and I'm just so grateful that I could have my career continue here in HopHog. So, thank you, Board of Education and the committee, for making that happen. I appreciate it.
Before we move on, I just want to thank a few people who participated in a superintendent's search. Mr. Giacchetti, Kevin Giacchetti, on behalf of the HopHog Teachers Association and our Ms. Gordon, Doreen Gordon, on behalf of HAP, Mr. Nelson, Steve Nelson, on behalf of UPSU. Ms. Lloyd, Katie Lloyd, on behalf of our HOSASA. Rebecca Bilske, on behalf of PPS and HAP, and Ms. Judy Olachaya, our president of PTA Council. They spent hours and hours with us trying to make this decision and provided insight that the board could not have gotten either way, so I just want to thank them. I don't think anyone's here anymore, but I just want to thank them for their efforts. Okay, so, we have a few items left on the agenda, and Dr. O'Hara has indicated that he needs to use the restroom. So, we're going to take a literally a two, a three-minute break. We'll come back at nine twenty-five and finish up. Steve, we good?
We're good.
Thank you. Welcome back. That concludes tonight's consent agenda. Number eight on the agenda are policies, which there are none tonight, discussion matters that are none tonight, new business. Do any board members have new business they'd like to bring up? Mr. Scrito?
I just have three things, Mr. Barshay. Hopefully, this is working. It's not working. Number one, I know the facilities meet, I know the facilities met tonight, the, do we have any word on the tennis courts? Was that brought up? Because I know that was an email that we got.
The tennis courts currently are not part of any capital project that we have on the horizon yet. However, we did just repair, perform repairs to them so that they can play them this season. It does happen, the tennis courts age, and they need to be repaired, so we do put money into them to repair them so that they're safer to get through the season. Until we replace them, we will need to do this periodically, of course, to maintain it, but we did, we did just recently repair the tennis court.
I'm going to ask the question, Mrs. Lindsay, again. There's still no way, with all the great community people that we have, the great community companies that we have, that we can't seek out donations and have sponsorship for some of these great things? I mean, I go to Shaminad, and I got X, what do they have, X Armor, Armor X, whatever, they got all over the place. There's still nothing we can do as far as that, Lindsay, in taking sponsorship? I mean, why do we have to wait?
Yeah, so, Lindsay, short of giving advice, legal advice to the board, can you just talk to us in general about what the requirements are as far as what we're allowed to do as far as sponsorships? I think that's what Mr. Scrito's asking about, but again, please, you know, don't touch on our individual situation.
Generally, sponsorships like that are not permitted, but, you know, people can donate services and be thanked for them, you know, with small class or small, you know, the sponsorships in themselves, where it depends on, it sort of depends on the circumstances and how it's being done.
If you go to Smithtown Schools, which I know you're aware of, they have their things in front of the Smithtown School District Office, and it was donated by Gapsey, and they have their name there, and that'll be there forever, in stone. So, I just, I have to ask, because I just, you know, it's there, and, you know, even the townships have now started doing as well, and this concept has stuff that's donated by Gapsey, which is brilliant for both parties, because the business gets, you know, recognition, and it helps the municipality.
And we can work with the, I mean, we could work with the districts to do things that are permitted pursuant to the law.
Yeah, you would think that, you know, with the squeeze that's on, on school districts from Albany concerning everything, that they would allow us to be a little more creative as far as fundraising and sponsorship goes, so perhaps the time is right to sort of press that threshold a little bit and see how far we can go before they, you know, tell us we can't. Yep, Mr. Scrito?
Yep.
Number two, Dr. O'Hara, if you could just go over for the people in the audience, as well as the people watching. as well as the people watching on Zoom still, I guess, the graduation plans for, you know, for all three, high school, middle school, and elementary, sir? How would that be going, sir?
So the good news is with the changes in guidelines, high school graduation will happen on the football field. We believe it's likely people won't have to be tested. We'll have to have a socially distant graduation ceremony. And if you didn't hear me, I said it's likely testing won't be required. Same for the middle school. The middle school moving up ceremony, and the elementary schools are planning outdoor graduation, excuse me, outdoor stepping up ceremonies as well. And junior prom will happen on our campus outside, so there'll be no need for masks and no need for testing. The senior prom is happening at the Watermill Inn in two different groups because of the numbers in the group or the size of the group, so there'll be kind of like two proms. And it's indoors at the Watermill Inn, so unfortunately, masks will be required at the senior prom.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hara. Yes. I also want to thank and recognize Hop Hog Education Foundation. This year's graduation for our seniors will be outside. And there was some money short that we needed for decorations, and I want to thank the Hop Hog Education Foundation for stepping up and helping our community as well as our, you know, seniors. So I just want to thank them for all their support. Thank you.
Oh, God, okay, yeah. Thank you. Any other new business from board members? New business from administration?
No.
Questions and comments from the community concerning anything related to the district whatsoever, ma'am? I'm sorry we, we made you wait, especially with the baby.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I have a son in Forest Brook. Moved here about, yeah, three years ago. I just would really love support from the board and the superintendent to, I know it's out of your hands, to please write a letter to the state about removing the masks for children. I would really appreciate it. Respectfully, I know Cuomo's threatening funding. I know he's coming down hard on all of you. I'm a teacher in another district, but these are our kids. You know, the pandemic destroyed, I have a business in the community, it hurt, but not my kids. You know? Respectfully.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm part of Forest Brook Student Government. I am the president of the school, and I am in fifth grade, Ms. Garvey's class. When we're outside, we take mass breaks, but we're still playing. And when we come inside, I notice a lot of the kids are like dying, like, and we can't have so many kids out of the room at a time to fill their water bottles up. And a lot of kids look like they're gonna like faint. And one of my friends, she almost did. And she like, I believe she went down to like the nurse just to lie down because she wasn't feeling good. And I just, kind of bothers me that like she had to go down because she didn't feel good, and too many kids were out to go get water. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to thank the wonderful, caring teachers of Forest Brook for the wonderful job they've done over the years. You guys have truly been wonderful. You've helped raise my children into wonderful young people they are now. In fact, you've helped raise my daughter to be active and fight for student rights, and she became Forest Brook's SGA president. As SGA president, she wanted to speak up what's right, even if it goes against the popular opinion, and she tries to do what's right. In fact, two weeks ago, she even went to a rally to represent Hop Hog and Forest Brook unofficially as the student government president to unmask the children. She was ready to speak up for the cruelty of it and how it's not right, and how it is negatively affecting them personally and in their learning and education. I am very proud of her, and she was able to stand up and stand up for something that she believed in. I am, in fact, here also to help speak on her behalf and everybody else's, but I'm going to give a different perspective than that of just a parent. I'm here to give you a side of the story of a teacher in a classroom. While this goes against the grain on most teachers and might upset many of them and our unions, I'm here to tell you what it's like to be a teacher masked in a classroom, because I don't want to be silenced anymore. As a teacher, I am telling you, the last week in a classroom masked up was cruel. It felt like it was over ninety degrees, hot, humid, and very hard to breathe. In September, I recorded and posted a video of myself outside with a professional carbon dioxide monitor, and in less than four minutes, I maxed out the monitor while wearing a mask. I am expected to wear that mask for forty minutes at a time while talking and trying to teach and educate young children. I've actually considered myself lucky compared to students, though, because at least I get a break on my free periods. Students have had to keep it up all along, on all day long, except for eating lunches. I have watched my students come into class this week looking like they're about to have heat exhaustion, especially when they come in from gym or outside. Some of their faces are beet red, and I've had to stop and direct them to the water fountain to bring back just a little cup of water so they stay hydrated because they forget. I also tell them to take their mask off if they need a break, which leads me to something interesting. In September, I was written up for actually allowing students to breathe in my classroom. I told my classes in the beginning of the year that they can take their mass break whenever they want and for however long they want. And I was actually called into a principal's office and then brought into district administration and disciplined for not wearing a mask correctly and allowing students to breathe freely. I was told the teachers complained about me for not wearing a proper mask and also not having it on even when I was further than six feet away from people. And the union fought for this, and the union fought for the tougher mask policies. Not all teachers agree with it, and teachers are willing to fight for the students. I had even presented paperwork from my doctor saying I shouldn't wear a mask because I had an injury to my face due to it being broken and surgery on my ear that wasn't good enough. No other alternatives. They call my doctor, and even though my doctor fought for it, it still wasn't good enough. I was told again, thank my union for it. I was told again, it is because of them. I would really like to know why no one has stood up to Cuomo and said enough is enough. After Friday's letter, only three districts on Long Island stood up for being masked. What have you done to gain control of our rights and to do what's best for our children? Why are we not directly in charge of our school policies? Has the board called and complained to Cuomo? Are you scared he's going to come down here? Has the superintendent's even bothered trying to get together and stand up together? Do you really think he's going to take away our money? That is our money. That is our taxes. Has Dr. O'Hara tried to stand up? Or is he too square to get questioned about his license? I am just a teacher, and I've been trying to stand up all year for my students. I have been to rallies, I have been written up, and I continue to stand up even to my own union and anyone else, because what right is right and what wrong is wrong. No one is saying that we're taking away anybody's mask right. If somebody wants to get a vaccine, they are free to. If somebody wants to wear a mask, they can. But currently in New York, we have a point zero three infection, less than one percent. When is enough is enough? When can we just say no? No, thank you. I just want to breathe. I would also like to put, like to ask anybody who's in favor of wearing masks to come into a classroom with no air conditioning. I think it's very easy for any administrator to be sitting pretty behind their air conditioning offices all day long and for their secretaries while we are suffering and wearing a mask. They should not be allowed to have air conditioning while, so they can feel what we feel, and they have to still wear a mask. I am willing to bet their attitudes will change, and suddenly they'll be willing to fight for us. The people making these decisions are not sitting in rooms without air conditioning. Anyone in this room right now gets to enjoy this air conditioning, but yet not all students do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. You can come up. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to ask the Hop Hog Board of Education to represent the growing number of Hop Hog families that are against the continuation of masking our children at school. We're asking you to please write a letter to the New York State Commissioner of Health and Cuomo to unmask our children. I have my children's pediatric nurse practitioner here tonight who represents my family and many others in the Hop Hog District who would like to speak on the behalf of our children.
Ma'am, if I, before you, I think your request for us to write a letter is completely reasonable and appropriate, and we will do that immediately.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And you are Dr. O'Hara or, or Dr. Murphy?
I'm sorry?
You are. You... Okay, I'm sorry, what is your name?
I'm innocent. I'm innocent, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just want to know who said that.
He said we would, he said we...
I just wanted to clarify, because I know the parents wanted to hear that you're stating that you were, that the board will write a letter to Dr. Zucker, the New York State Department of Health, on behalf of the students of the district to advocate for no further masks.
Yes, that's right.
Amazing, okay, so I will still...
You'll have to forgive me, because, because we're so close and you're speaking on a microphone, it's hard to hear you. But if you're asking whether I said that we're going to write a letter, the Board of Education, which is who I'm the president of, the answer is absolutely yes.
Good, okay.
And we'll do that immediately.
Perfect. I will, I'll still speak, because I was invited to come in here today. I'll probably alter some of it, because now you've already, you know, agreed to do what it was that I was going to request of you. My name is Jennifer Zethner. I am a pediatric nurse practitioner here on Long Island. I've been working in pediatrics for over twenty years. I also have three children in the Harper Fields District. I've been invited to multiple Board of Ed meetings across Long Island for the last week and the coming weeks, because families are incredibly concerned about this issue. And obviously, with the confusion from Governor Cuomo, the clarification really has to come from the schools themselves to please advocate, as we just discussed. Just some history, just, you know, if anybody else here on the board wants more information, you know, like all of you who have children and, you know, have been through this pandemic since March 2020, there was a lot of fear. Right, we were all very, very afraid. I was extremely afraid, because my mom started chemo the exact week of the pandemic. Children were the most afraid. Children may not have admitted that and might not have known how to express it, but certainly they were the most afraid. They were pulled from school, they were moved from their friends, and they were concerned they were going to get sick, and they were concerned that their parents would get sick, their grandparents would die. In fact, that was kind of embedded into their little system, that somebody was going to die from what was going on here in the news, family members talking about it, et cetera. It was intensified when children were then notified by, you know, officials, right? We were all told that children were asymptomatic carriers. So now children were wandering around, being told that they could, in fact, get their family members sick and not even know it, right? So I worked throughout the entire pandemic, I continued to see my, my, my families in my practice, and I often heard family members say to their child, they have to wear their mask to keep grandma safe. I probably might have even said it to my ten-year-old at one point or another. What an incredible responsibility we have put on our children. Wear a mask to save grandma. Inevitably, grandma will die, and at some point, that child may still think that that was their fault. This is, this is real. This is the way you all work with children. This is how children think. So we put this incredible fear. It is going to take years to take the fear out of our children. So the steps have to start, and they have to start quickly, and they have to continue. One of the bigger pushes tonight is to also make sure that the masks do not get reinstated in the fall. And I think that's why a lot of family members are out here now these last two weeks, right? People who, people who are having a different experience, I like to use a nice word, because I don't want to put, you know, I don't like to say we're in two different places, but people who are having a different experience of the pandemic would say, well, why are you even bothering? There's only two weeks left. It's to fight for the fall. We are eyes on the fall, right? All right, so as I practiced as a medical provider, and we entered into the fourth and sixth month of the pandemic, it was becoming very clear from the work that I do, from speaking with colleagues, from watching the news, that children were not at risk for this illness whatsoever. In fact, children are, the mortality rate for coronavirus is equivalent essentially to the flu annually. There's approximately two hundred deaths annually from the flu, two hundred approximately from coronavirus. Every life matters, of course, but just to put it in perspective, four thousand children die annually in motor vehicle accidents. So perspective matters. And so when they talk about every death, and we have to read about every death, of course, that's devastating to hear, but perspective, two hundred children that were trying, you know, everything that we're putting them through, eventually the risks outweigh the benefits, right? So by the fall, as a medical provider, working again, speaking with colleagues, it was also becoming very clear that children were not asymptomatic carriers. We were seeing this once the schools started, we were also seeing it, the American Academy of Pediatrics has stated it, other, you know, well-established medical journals, journals like the Lancet have also stated it, children are not asymptomatic carriers. I don't know when that message is going to get loud and clear to the people who need to hear it. Children are not at risk for the coronavirus, and children are not asymptomatic carriers. I'm going to skip this part, because I don't need to convince you to write a letter, because you already are, all right? I just want to give you, you know, some more information here. The CDC has put out a study, a study was done by the CDC, that anxiety and depression rates in our teenagers are up sixty-three percent since the start of the pandemic, significant mental health issues across the board for all of our students. Some of that is from the masking and from the social distancing. A lot of it is from having to not be in school whatsoever and being away from their, their peers. I hear from families across New York State and honestly across the whole region here, every day, I hear from families, just today, with the heat, middle schoolers are texting their parents nonstop, it's ninety degrees, I can't breathe. And the parents will text back, tell them they have to take your mask off. You know what they say? No, because they don't want to get yelled at, they don't want to be, you know, I was just speaking with Amanda before, you know, we would think when we were in high school, we would be, we'd be screaming out against this. This generation, they, they're doing what they're told, because their peers are doing it. They're getting made fun of if they take off their mask, and that goes down from the older grades into the younger grades as well. One final message here for you. We keep making decisions, again, please keep this in mind for the fall, in the fall, we get sick. As a society, we get sick. We start school, we start sports, we end all of our summer fun, all of our relaxation. We will see illnesses in the fall. That does not mean the coronavirus is necessarily back and on us, but they're going to make us feel like that is what's happening. So we will be back in at Board of Ed meetings if, if the masks are mandated again in any of these districts, because it does look like it's going to come down from district to district here, is the way that Cuomo is speaking about this. An abundance of caution is the words that we keep using for our children. Abundance of caution. There reaches a point, again, that the risks outweigh the benefits. Districts across the, New York here and across the region are sending letters, the letter to, goes to Governor Cuomo, goes to Dr. Zucker, to the local Department of Health as well. If you want examples, we can get them from other districts. If you haven't met already with other superintendents to see what, what other schools are doing to advocate for this. And we're spreading the message to all the parents to do the same. If one child had to wear a mask in school, if there was one child walking around your hallways who had to wear a mask, every single adult would be afraid for this child. He has to wear his mask while he's doing running in gym. Everybody would say, he's going to pass out, we're afraid for him, he shouldn't be doing that. If one child was wearing a mask in this ninety-degree heat and was sitting in a classroom and couldn't breathe, we would be so concerned for him. We're not concerned for all the children, though, when they're going through it. It blows my mind on a daily basis that if one child was in, that child would be screaming and yelling and complaining, we'd all be concerned for him, yet every child is, and when every child is, they say nothing, because they listen to their authority, they listen to their peers, and they keep their mask on. And you know when they complain? When they go home. If you have children, if you, they stay, they keep it together while in school, and they go home, is when everything comes out. All right? Children, one final quote here, I just want to tell you. We want to have you all please advocate for children, that there's no mandate for masks. There also should be no mandate for this vaccine, because as Joe Biden has told us, as Joe Biden said in February of this year, children are the safest group of people in the whole world. Thank you so much for listening to me, I really appreciate your time.
Do you mind staying for a second? I really want to thank you, you know, it, it's very nice to hear you speak intelligently and thoughtfully about this.
Thank you.
And you're incredibly articulate, and thank you.
Thank you.
For speaking with us. You know, we're, we're up here, and it's easy to yell at us, you know, with a face of...
I tried not to yell at anybody. I get excited, because it's, but certainly you're all...
I get it, but I, I get it, all right? But understand, we all have children in the district as well, all right? I have a kid with asthma that's... All right, let me...
They, they said they're going to.
Yeah, so I have a kid with asthma who struggles with the mask. I'd like to respond, but, you know, so- All right, you know, I was going to share-
No, your child has asthma. It's very difficult to have asthma and have to wear a mask.
Yeah, I was going to share some personal stuff, but it's all right. So, you know, your request to write a letter, like I said, is reasonable, and it will be done immediately.
Excellent, and if you need more, you know, information or resources, I'd be more than happy to provide it to the board as well.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you mind emailing or whatever your comments? Is that, because there was some good stuff in there that I'd love to-
The articles from New England Journal of Medicine-
Yeah, I'd love to incorporate that in the position that we take, so.
Absolutely, I'll give them to Mrs. Malafin, and she'll send them over.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wendy, there was someone that was coming up behind, yeah. You're next, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Hi, my name's Tara Vasquez. We've spoken, Mr. Barshay. Just want to say thank you for reaching out to me with your concerns about my daughter. You're the only person that followed up with me regarding my daughter. The school nurse did not follow up with my daughter after two weeks. Instead, she wore this mask to school and was put into isolation. I walked into school today with this mask on. She asked me to, to see what would happen. Nobody said a word to me. I sat here, no one said a word to me, because I'm an adult and I know my rights. My eight-year-old daughter is terrified to get in trouble. She's a rule follower. When there's not enough rules, she puts rules in place. I ask her every single day if she's taking mask breaks, and to my knowledge, she was. And after field day, I found out that my daughter had to run a potato sack race in 96 Real Field with the mask on. I'm pretty sure the gym teachers could have figured out a way to do the field day where the kids were six feet apart, where they didn't have to wear masks. It was my fault as a parent for not confirming that before she went to field day. I assumed that the school used common sense, because a couple weeks prior, she ran a half-mile with no mask on. I freaked out when she came home and told me, "I ran a half-mile today," because I was like, "Oh, my gosh, did you have to wear a mask?" It's just crazy that those are the things that I have to worry about. I don't know anything about her school. We just moved to the district a few days before school opened. So we were a little bit disadvantaged. We didn't get to be involved in the reopening process. It was new waters for us to figure out on our own. So I took a reactive approach all year to see what the school was going to do. I was very happy in the beginning. I heard from Dr. O'Hara a lot about COVID. I said, "Wow, this is great." I always, I feel very informed as a parent. And then all of a sudden, I realized the only time I heard from him was regarding COVID. I felt like there was nothing else going on in the district. No positive message at all. It's already, you guys have already agreed to write the letter, but I went and I printed out as many letters as I could find from other districts, surrounding districts, mostly in Suffolk, of letters that they've written to Cuomo, to their parents, advocating for their kids. It's crazy to me that we have to be here and ask you guys to do this. I understand that Comac jumped ahead and they had to reverse their decision. I don't want that for HOPHOG, but we can't stay quiet either. What does that do? We open our doors to have a vaccine site at the high school. You can get vaccinated pretty much everywhere. I sent an email out and made the joke, "You can pretty much almost get vaccinated at McDonald's." There's no reason why there should be a vaccination site at the high school. The government has already infiltrated almost every aspect of our lives, almost every aspect. There's no reason to open our doors and allow them to come in, even if it's after school hours, to inject people with an experimental vaccine. It's not even FDA-approved. I just don't understand what the purpose of that. You send out a survey asking for people's opinions. I just think that was a formality, because I think it was the next day that it was like, "Oh, it's already scheduled," and I'm just like, my mind was blown, because when I moved here, I was so excited, because my, I grew up in Ronconcombe, I graduated from Connect Quad High School. And when I graduated in 2010, and I moved away. I started, I had my daughter, I had to drop out of college at 21. I had to raise my daughter with my husband, and we've been trying to navigate life. She's eight years old now. We finally bought our first house. I was so excited to come to HOPHOG, because my mom was like, "It is very conservative." I lived in Queens for seven years, Flushing, Queens, and then I went to Westchester for the previous year. Didn't think that New York City could get worse till I went to Westchester. Then I came here, and I'm like, "Wait a second, why are we taking a reactive approach instead of being proactive? They want to mandate this vaccine on our kids." That is the end game. I'm pretty sure that's why the other districts surrounding us didn't open the doors for the Health Department to come in and vaccinate our kids, because they know the end game. Cuomo, I don't know if it was yesterday or before, I can't really keep up with the guy, but, you know, he wants our school nurses now to vaccinate our kids during school. When it comes time for that, how are you going to tell him no? You already allowed the Health Department to come in here. You already allowed the government to come in our schools. How are you going to tell them no? Who stands up for our kids? My daughter attended the Unmask Our Kids rally at Steve Ballewone's office. I sent an email out to everybody here, and I attached pictures of her. I also printed them out, so you can all see. This is my eight-year-old. It says, "Unmask Us Now." So when I started, I said about what happened to my daughter. Mr. Barshay was the only person that followed up with me. A couple weeks after field day, she was playing outside soccer with the mask on. About an hour later, she went back to her classroom. She threw up in her mask. She was so afraid she would get in trouble, she didn't take her mask down. You can die from inhaling your own toxins. But my daughter is such a rule follower that she didn't, clearly, she didn't know that. I didn't know I had to coach her on that either. So she went over to her teacher with throw-up in her mask, and her teacher's freaking out to get the mask off her. She threw up two more times in the classroom. She was sent down to the nurse. The nurse did not even take her temperature. Her doctor was very upset by that, because we're not sure if it was heat-related or not, because her temperature was not taken. Instead, she was cleaned up, she was given something to drink, and then she was given a mask to put back on while she waited to be picked up. That's infuriating. She had just puked three times in a short period of time. To then be given a mask to put back on when she's clearly isolated, she's isolated from people, there's no reason for that. And of course, she put the mask back on. I get it, walking out of the school, perfectly fine. My mom had to pick her up that day, because I was home with my eight-month-old, and I also work from home. And as soon as she got to the door, she bursted out into tears, and she had an envelope in her hands. You would think it would be maybe a report from the nurse, what happens, what she, how she cared for her. No, it was a COVID release form. And my daughter was in tears, because she was afraid that she would have to get a COVID test to go back to school. So she gets home, she takes a nap, she sleeps about three hours, wakes up, completely fine. I took her temperature, mind you, when she came home, no temperature. I called the doctor, he said, "Let her sleep, bring her tomorrow." I let her sleep, she woke up, completely fine. She wanted to go to dance class, I said, "No." She wanted McDonald's for dinner, I said, "No." Gave her some crackers, nothing happened the next day, nothing. She was fine, we went to the doctor, and he was very upset to find out that the nurse didn't even bother checking her temperature. Also, I asked Mr. Gagliardi to call me. He did call me right away with the email that I sent. Mr. Barshay called me right away, too. He asked her teacher to call me. Her teacher called me. The only reason I know what happened is because of her amazing teacher. Her teacher also informed me that my daughter rarely takes her mask down when the teacher allows for mask breaks. And this is somebody who I ask every single day if she's taking her mask down for mask breaks. Had no idea that my kid's torturing herself by not giving herself mask breaks. So I ask her, "Why? Why are you not doing, why are you not taking your mask down?" "'Cause I don't want anyone to get in trouble." I'm like, "What do you mean?" "Well, there's kids always walking near my desk." And I'm like, "Okay, so then they're not following the rules, that has nothing to do with you." She doesn't get that. And I tried to explain that to Mr. Gagliardi. Before, I knew that my own daughter was guilty of it, that some kids can't advocate for themselves. Some kids are timid, they don't know how to stick up for themselves. Clearly, my daughter is like that. Who's going to do that? She's lucky to have a teacher who is amazing. And I would have had a mental breakdown a long time ago if it wasn't for her. But this is not the same for all kids. There are some kids in third grade, and it's mostly elementary, because the older kids are able a little bit to advocate for themselves. They don't get any mask breaks at all. And it's teacher-specific. And it just bothers me that it's like that, that kids are being treated unequally. I'm all for equality. Equality, not equity. They're different, in case people don't know. I'm all for it. But kids are not experiencing that. They're having very different experiences, and that's not okay. When I go to work, I don't get to pick what rules I want to follow. You guys set the rules, and the teachers have to follow them. It's not the teachers that run things. Our kids are suffering. And I understand, "Oh, it's been a successful school year." For who? Yeah, our kids were in school, but there's a lot of other things that come with that. You know how much time I've had to take off from work? I don't remember sending, when I sent her to school, being told that I have to do all these remote learning days. And now, recently, I've been, she's been out of school in the last month more times than she's been in school because of the hot days, which is why I went and bought this mask, because I can't do the remote learning all the time when I work from home and I have an eight-month-old with me also. So I thought this would solve the problem. Apparently not. 9:45 in the morning, I got the call, when she wore this to school, from the nurse, who hasn't called me in two weeks from my daughter throwing up. So of course, I'm very angry. And what did she tell me? "If I don't get up there, my daughter will be thrown in isolation." And she was. Didn't know it at the time, because I flipped out and said, "You better have the principal call me." Mr. Gagliardi is very responsive. He called me immediately, and we had a discussion, and I said, "Where is my daughter right now?" And he said, "She's in her class." Found out later on, she was not in her class. That is not his fault, he did not know that. I found out that she was in isolation, because the nurse put her there. As soon as we got off the phone, Mr. Gagliardi went over and removed her from isolation and put her back in her class, where she belonged, while she waited for a proper mask to be brought up for her. That's outrageous. Completely outrageous. And once again, shows how rogue some of these staff members are and want to make their own rules. She's six feet apart in her class, and her teacher allows them mask breaks and whatever. There's no reason why she had to be removed. They made her go down to the nurse's office while she called me. When she got off the phone with me, she made my daughter with the same mask on, walk back to her classroom crying, she was crying, and had to pack up all her stuff in front of her fellow second graders, who are now like, "Oh, my gosh, what happened?" They're all like speculating, and it's embarrassing. She's hysterically crying. To then go to isolation for a few minutes, to then be removed. Kids don't belong in adult fights. And I'm tired of it. No one's asking you to break the rules. But if you're not willing to stand up for our kids, who is? It's May, or it's June, I don't even know what day it is. I just want this year to be over. But I will homeschool my child next year, if this continues. And I know a lot of other parents will, too. I know the school's lost over 100 kids in the last year. I'm new to this district, so I'm just really meeting these people just recently, in the last two weeks. I already know at least 50 people that want to homeschool their kids next year, if this continues. And imagine how many more, if they mandate this vaccine. We need the board to stand up. Every day, I'm advocating to our elected officials, but they don't care about us. There's been school districts, I think it was Rocky Point, Comaswag, and Shoreham, they teamed up together and wrote a letter to Cuomo. That is powerful. After what happened this past weekend, Massapequa, yesterday, stood with their parents, their administration, and the board against Cuomo. That is what leadership is. That is true leadership. That is truly fighting for our kids. It's amazing to me how people will just jump when they want to pull funding. If I tell people to vote no on the budget, I'm hurting the kids, right? "Oh, it's all about hurting the kids if you vote no to the budget." But Cuomo, what he did yesterday, threatening funding, that's fine, right? No one's going to stand up for that? What about the mask police? What are you guys going to do if the mask police show up at our school? Why is nobody asking these questions? You're going to allow them in our school? Then they come in, what happens? What if they see my daughter and they don't see what, they don't like what they see? Are you guys thinking about these things? The government has infiltrated our schools. And you guys are sitting back and just like, "Well, we're playing it safe, don't want to give false hope, do we?" You're not giving any hope. We need you to fight for us. We need you to team up with other school districts to fight for us. It's amazing how we always want to be like Comac and Smithtown and all these other ones. But when it comes time to actually act and do something that real leaders do, silence. So I appreciate that you guys are going to write the letter, but you have to do more. You guys have to be advocating every day, every press conference you need to be at. Otherwise, this is never going to end.
How many of you think you're going to get sick if you took your mask off?
None of you.
All tariffed. All right, if you, guys, if you want to speak, just come up.
One last thing.
Tara.
I just want to show you my daughter's face, right? This is my daughter, so happy that she can go back to school. And she can breathe outside in 93 weather. See? This is her. The state announced that I won't be today, no problem. Because you're not bullying me. Because I know my rights. Beautiful, isn't she? Think about that, please.
Tara, can you, do you mind forwarding me copies of the letters you collected?
Yes, you can take all of these.
Yeah.
It's about 25 different letters.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cavanaugh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for staying this late and hearing us out. My name is Suzanne Bono. I am a parent, I'm a step-parent of a seventh-grade boy, and a parent to two little girls, one who is in Forest Brook Kindergarten. I'm actually here with just a slightly different perspective. But to start off, I know a few of you, I can see you, I know Dr. O'Hara, you are a father, Mr. Bescarino, Mr. Crawford, but I ask the rest of the board and individuals in this room, could you please raise your hand if you have a child regardless of age? I do ask. Could you please raise your hand? Okay. So I'm coming to you in a position of asking you about your morals and the core values of yourself as a parent. Okay, so yes, you've agreed to write a letter. As a parent, I am ashamed of every single individual on this board and sitting in front of you. The reason being is that you are not doing your job as a parent, which is setting an example. My number-one job, and I believe every single parent out there, our number-one job and our number-one priority is always our child, correct? Yes? Would we put ourselves through flames? Would we allow ourselves to get hit by a bus? Would we put ourselves before our child? Yes or no? Yes or no? Yes? No?
Yes!
Okay. So here are some of the questions that I have for you. And I just want to start off by saying that I have one child who's been in EI for PT, for gross motor delay and speech delay. Okay, she's not, she does receive services through the district now because she's about to turn four. I also have a daughter who had no speech issues whatsoever until this year. What does this have to do with anything? This has to do with the fact that a simple mask interferes with a child's speech tremendously. My kindergartner, who had not a single problem whatsoever, was leaving, was mixing up sounds, was end, was cutting the ends of words off. So instead of, for instance, instead of saying "hand," she would say "han." "Sand," "san," are you understanding where I'm going? It was, it was a consonance deletion at the end of it. All because of the masks that we're wearing. So I want you to take that into consideration. What would that be like for you if your child came in and you knew that you are not doing a single thing, and there are little children out there, yours included, who could be potentially developing a delay due to the things that you're sitting there wearing? Here are my questions. Have you tried your best to bring up your child or children to be a follower or a leader? Do you want them to be a sheep? Is that okay with you? Have you taken pride in teaching your child that it isn't always right to fit in versus the fact that perhaps, I know that this is my number-one priority, is I want my child to be uniquely themselves. I want them to stand up for themselves. I do not want them to fall in line with someone else. Hell, I'm standing up here with blue, purple, and pink hair. I am a former teacher, stay-at-home parent now. The last thing in the world I would ever want, and I think I can speak for all of you, is you would not want your child to just go along and follow the rules, would you? Or would you like them to know that their voices are being heard? If your child, or a child in this district, witnesses an act of bullying or abuse, would you be proud to know that your child stayed silent? I think not. Or do you want to bring up your child to stand up, to speak out, to do what is right? If your child has been a victim of abuse, whether it is physical, mental, or emotional, do you want them to stay silent? Or is your job as a parent, an educated, an educator, or a board member, to teach our children, our future, to speak out against those evils? To stand up for themselves? I think you see where I'm going with this. My son, who's in seventh grade, just follow me for a second. I've always, he's actually my stepson. I call him my own. We don't, we do not need to share blood type or DNA. He's mine. Is not very assertive. He hasn't gotten to that point, but ever since he was little, I've told him, being unique, being crazy is good. It's different. It's great. It's a wonderful thing. A few months ago, he asked to go get a shake with friends after school, and we said, okay. All of a sudden, lo and behold, fast forward, he never wound up going. When I asked him what happened, he said he was supposed to go with two other boys and two girls, and one of the girls was speaking poorly about someone in his family. And then he found out that this, another one of the girls was speaking poorly about another friend, and he kindly said, could you do me a favor? Could you stop speaking about them like that? Could you just stop for a little bit? And the girl said, no. And he said, well, then, I'm not going. This group that he was supposed to go with were part of like, more of like a cool crew. It was one of the most proud moments of my life to know that my son stood up for the other boy. That my son stood up for what was wrong. Irregardless of the fact that now these other individuals, and we all know that peer pressure is huge in middle school, is that I knew I was being a great parent. I was a part of that. Because I was teaching my son to stand up for what is right. So my problem with every single individual in front of me is that I don't give a crud about the letter that now you're agreeing to write. You guys should have been the first ones there. Dr. O'Hara, I could be wrong. How many, how many children do you have?
Four.
Four boys, right? Yeah, because I saw it on social media. I would like to know, if you can truly, actually, this goes out for all of you, can you truly go to sleep at night knowing that you have done everything in your power to fight for your child? To fight for the future? To fight for your future grandchildren? Can you go to sleep, Dr. O'Hara? You don't even have to answer this. This is more like a rhetorical question. Can you go to sleep at night knowing that you have done every single thing in your power to fight for the thousands of children in this district? That you have done everything in your power so that, God forbid you are not here tomorrow, that your four boys can look up at you and say, god damn it, my father was amazing. My father was brave. He did what was right. And he stood up. He stood out, and he spoke out. If you can't, let me, I'm still shaking. I haven't done public speaking in a really long time. I haven't been in front of the classroom in a really long time. I didn't want to be up here. You asked my neighbor up there, she said, are you going to speak? And I said, no. And then I realized, what kind of parent am I doing? What kind of example am I setting for my daughter if I just sit back there and listen to everyone else? What are you doing? What kind of example are you setting for your child, for your grandchildren, for the future of America, for the children of Hop Hog? What kind of example are all of you setting? I know some of you are sitting there rolling your eyes, because I can see it, but you want to know what I see? Here's what I see. I see that you are setting an example of cowardice, of being a follower. You're teaching our children that their voice does not matter. You are teaching our children that one person cannot make a difference. And I don't care if it's one person. But I'm sorry, Dr. O'Hara, and I'm so sorry, because I know you're leaving. I don't know if that's why you're tiptoeing around it, because you want to go into your new district quietly. But can you, can you guys really go to sleep at night and sit there and say, I am proud to be sitting on this Board of Education? I am proud to be representing the children of this district? And I am a proud mother or father? Because from my perspective, I don't think any of you should be able to sleep at night.
Thank you, Ms. Cavanaugh.
Two things, real quick. What is the status of the positions, the two assistant superintendents' positions?
The positions have been listed, posted, I guess they call it, and we're receiving applications.
So if we have a couple of week break, are we doing?
I can't, I can't understand. Say it again.
If we have a couple of week break, is there going to be interim superintendent? Is that the plan?
As we said, I think, two meetings ago, there'll either be interims or permanent. There'll be continue, continuous leadership in that regard.
Okay, the other question, I don't know if this came over on a question to the board. On Facebook, people were asking about the universal pre-K. I don't believe we are having it, but I just want to verify, and I think it's something to do with its additional funding, it's just not the funding from the state, but I'm not sure if it could be clarified for the people listening.
You're asking to clarify, for us to clarify?
If we're not having, if we're definitely not having the pre-K and the reasons why we couldn't do it.
Murphy.
We have not made a decision yet. We're investigating the viability. There is money available to districts, but we have to have discussions with the board to see what's possible. There's no decision yet, but it's something we're looking at.
Okay. Not for myself, obviously. And then I just want to thank all the ones that are leaving. I have enjoyed all of you. You've all helped me personally with the PTA, so you will be sorely missed, but I have all your contacts, so if I need anything, I'll be calling you. Joe, Don, I'll need your contact information so I could, you know, get ahold of you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavanaugh. Any further questions or comments from anyone?
Look a little tired. A little coffee, moonshine, something like that. I'm from the South, okay? We moved back up here a year ago, my wife, ICU nurse. She thought it'd be a great idea to come to the wonderful state of New York. I don't think it was. One question I have is, why can't y'all be more like Florida? I mean, every single thing lifted, every school district lifted. DeSantis, a total boss. You're afraid of a man that I've been to his house every weekend, having barbecues in his driveway. With the feds, okay, that hate him. He's a disgrace. Anybody who listens to him is a disgrace. He's not long for office. And all the people who follow against him and with him, everybody that's watching what he's doing, is a lot of educated people that understand about government overreach. And when you start messing with our families, you start messing with our Constitution, you start messing with that eagle. How, how fitting, the Hop Hog Eagles. What is an eagle? What does it do? It's a symbol of freedom. A symbol that everybody's allowing to go by the wayside in this country by the day, by the day. Policemen being targeted in every community, you know? Normally, I'm yelling at people over a bullhorn. And it works. Works great. It's cool. We talk a lot, back and forth. They yell, we yell, you know? But what happens? What, what gets addressed? At the end of the day, it's, it's like the Bible, right? You give the beginner's version of the Bible to your children, and then you read the King James version, because you understand it. Well, you're teaching these kids fear. You're teaching them division, which we all know in this country, they're, they're trying to divide that real good. They're running that stake. That's another question I have. Where do y'all stand on critical race theory? How's that going to affect the schools coming into September? Just how patriotic are you at the end of the day? What does America mean to you? Because to me, it means, take your masks off, have a backbone, work for a living, pay your taxes, don't sit home and collect your unemployment checks and think that Uncle Sam's going to pass you a couple more breadcrumbs once a month. That's not how life works. It's not how I was raised. Had my ass whooped every day if it needed to be, if I acted out of line. Teacher told me once, I was looking out a window, never forget it. Grew up in Massapequa, was Plannet High School. I won't name the teacher, but she told me, you're never going to mount nothing looking out that window. Well, I became an oil rig welder down in the South. And I made more money looking out that little small window than I could have ever imagined. And now I have that money to allocate and put it into use. That's what formed the Southern Loud Majority. It's also what formed Separate New York State, Divide and Conquer. Two movements that we're working very, very closely with. And I'm a Hop Hog community member. I live right, right around the block. My children both go to the school, my daughter to the middle, my son to the Pines Elementary. They're taught to be leaders in my house. Dogs, guns, flags, America, freedom. What I saw go on in this school district, just in the sports world, that's all I'm going to speak about. Because I don't know any of you well enough to commentate on any of your characters, except, Mr. O'Hara, I don't like you very much. But that'll be dealt with on another day. And in a polite, respectful way, with an email or something like that, that you'll never respond to, you know, something like that. These kids were muzzled like dogs playing sports, okay? Every one of these kids. And these coaches, they busted their ass to try and get these kids on the field, to try and get the mask restrictions lifted. I mean, what you, what, what this whole New York experience has been going from Florida to here, they call us slow down south? It's totally reversed. It's like the Fast Lane, and this is like, I don't know what happened in 1910. Okay? You need to do something. Your letters don't mean anything, because now, of course, they're after the fact, you know? Everything's after the fact in this country right now. Everything is after the fact. And you saw what happened over the summer. You saw these rallies. You saw what happened. When the people assemble, that's when they listen. When there's 20 or 30 people back here, you guys aren't going to listen. You're not going to listen. When there's 10,000 and you can't walk into school in the morning, you can't go to your offices, that's when people listen. Just a little lesson on government overreach. I know you're all very educated people, but there's also some of us tin knackers and blue-collar guys that are very, very educated on government overreach, and will continue to let our children know that the school district is implicit in affecting their mental psyche on a daily basis. And at a certain point, you're going to, that dog cage is going to rattle too much, and the dogs are going to come out. Y'all have a good night.
Any other comments or questions concerning anything related to the district?
I'm not going to hammer you guys, because I'm done, and you're done, and we're tired, and we all want to go home. I just want to ask you a couple of questions. We all know we want to get rid of the masks, that's pretty evident, but has anyone put out a survey to find out what the parents in the town feel about the mask, or the vaccine for that matter? I'd be curious to know what the entire area is feeling. I know there's a lot of fear, and I know a lot of parents who are fearful. My sister's a teacher. I grew up in Virginia. I'm also a Southerner. And she's, you know, she got the vaccine, and her and I got in a big argument over the weekend, because she's still a believer that the kids still need to wear their masks. And anyway, it turned out all right, we made up. But I'm just wondering, what's the temperature? You know, what are people feeling? I'm trying to be respectful to other people. I know they're afraid of the virus, everyone's experience is different. But how do we feel going into next year? You know, are we, I don't, I do not feel comfortable vaccinating my kids. I know some people do, and that's their choice. I know some people want to wear a mask, and that's their choice. I don't want to vaccinate my kid. Where, how do things work for us when Cuomo sets the standards? Do we have any legs to stand on, to go against him? Even if you guys do come at him, fighting back? Like, what is, what can you do for us if the government is coming at you?
Yep.
You have the floor.
Yeah, yeah, guys.
Most of the comments you guys are all saying, you know, you're going to find it hard to believe, we all agree on.
I know.
Certain things we can't talk about with executive session, but one thing we asked in open session was, we asked about what happens if we deny wearing the masks? Can we just go to school tomorrow and say, we're done? We were told, basically, they would remove us. Okay? That's not going to go us, get us any further. Voting is the number-one thing. I know Jesse came up and, you know, he, Florida, we have to keep Florida red. You're in a blue state, okay? So when people's hands are tied, it's very tough to swim, as you say. I'm not going to give up. I, I know Mrs. Bono said that, you know, I can tell you that all the other six board members fight every day for the kids and the community.
I know you do.
Okay? And we want what you guys want. I hate wearing this. I'm employed by the state. Okay? I know. Let me talk, I promise, because I, we're going to let you talk. We've been here the whole night. I'm going to give everybody a fair chance here. But we, we have to do what the state allows. So to say to shut down the school, that's not going to help the students either.
Right.
I don't think there is any easy answers. I'm never saying give up. I think you got to keep on fighting. I think it's fantastic that you're here. I think the board is being respective, and we're trying to hear everybody out. We, we do care, okay? But please appreciate, the state has a lot of control, and I think you guys understand that.
Yeah.
You know, it's very easy to say, you know what? F you, I'm not going to pay my taxes. Eventually, they come take your house, okay? You can be so strong until you're, you're living on the street.
Right.
Okay? So keep fighting. I, I've heard the letter stuff. I'm going to be honest with you, I think the letter stuff is a waste of time.
Yeah.
Okay? I've been, I've been on this board for over nine years. I think the letters was a nice gesture to make you feel good, and you walk back and sit in your seat. I've never believed in letters. If you want to get to the heart of this, Jesse's got a right thing. You got to sit in his driveway. You got to show him that you mean stuff, okay? And that's the problem. We need, go ahead.
I'm here what you say.
Yeah.
But I guess what everyone wants to see is that you guys come and rally with us, protest with us. Do you really believe what we're saying?
I think they're concerned about their jobs.
Well, it's not concerned about jobs.
We feel like that's what our concern is, is that maybe you guys might be more concerned about maintaining your position.
Well, we're not paid, so there's no position to, yeah. We're not paid.
No, it's not about, no, 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 it's not that, I'm not saying that, that.
You got to keep fighting. I would be more than happy to go thing, but I, I also have a family. Okay? I work, I work seven days. So I'm not going to say that, you know, people can say what they want. I, I do work, and I do pay my taxes, and I, and I do fight, okay? But I would go to one, I don't, I'm not going to speak to the other board members, but But I would go to one, I don't, I'm not gonna speak to the other board members, but I think the approach is, you have to get more people on your side than people against you.
Yeah.
You know, I voted the other way, and I lost the election this past fall, okay? I still think it was cheated, but I, 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 I feel, you know, okay? That's the way I feel. But I'm not gonna turn against the people now that I need on my side, because in two years, if I don't get it back, we're screwed.
Yeah.
Okay? So if we don't start bonding together, as Jesse pointed out, and we keep dividing apart, guess what? You're not gonna conquer crap. So my name is everywhere. You're wel, you're welcome to invite me anywhere. I don't hide my name. You're welcome to invite me anywhere. You can, invite me anywhere. If I can go, I'll go.
Yeah.
But I do have a family. So, and, and they all have families. So you can't criticize somebody because they're taking care of the sick mom, or they're taking care of the, you know, a, a nailing child. We have to give each other.
We have a leg to stand on with the mask. I mean, if we have enough parents that.
I'm gonna be honest with you, in, in a red state, i- it's hard.
Yeah.
I mean, in a blue state, because.
What if you, even if we have the teachers on our side?
Well, the teachers, what's it gonna tell you? It was the teacher union, the teacher union. New York City shut down for the longest time.
Some teachers feel the way we feel, as once before.
Yeah. I, I, I think you have to keep fighting. I think you have to bond together. I think the more people you can get together, but there's always more ways to tackle something than, than just getting aggressive. I, I, I'm gonna speak freely, and this is not against the board, against, this is me, Rob Skirito speaking. I don't like how the other side is speaking right now, to be honest with you. I hate the division. I hate watching the news. The only thing good about the news right now is I'm busy, because New York City's moving out. Because it's totally divided, New York City.
Agreed.
It's disgusting, okay? But I think the, the way this group has got to approach it is, is to get more people involved. And there shouldn't be room in the driveway for him to have a barbecue. There should be so many people, it should be like all those groups that were going through the city.
Yeah.
If he's having a barbecue, that means there's room. So get more people involved. But this is me talking, I'm not talking for the board.
Yeah.
I, I think you have to have a different approach. I, I think negatively attacking people that have been fighting this whole time for the board and for the community i- is not gonna get you stars. If, if we could do something, I can promise you, at least I would, would have done something, okay?
I understand.
Three schools the other day, you know this, tried to F Cuomo, right? What happened? They all had to reverse it like that. I, i- it's not intimidation. What happens is, they control the purse.
Does he charge you fees? We heard fees. Is that the case? Does school get feed? Like, you get like a $5,000 fee?
Well, they control the state funding. They control state funding, so you, you wouldn't be paying your teachers. Somewhere along the line, you'd, you'd have to stop something.
Yeah.
So.
So we're going to Albany, is what you're saying. I'm going to Albany.
Well, I like Jesse's idea. I'd rather be at Cuomo's house.
Yeah.
Because that's who I know where he lives, you know? You have to go where the people are gonna hear you.
Okay.
Because that's what they do. They, they go to our politicians, and they attack ours.
Well, thanks for listening to us. I can't tell if you're smiling or frowning, because you've got your mask on.
Oh, it's not by choice. It, it's not by choice, but please appreciate.
Yeah.
We've all stayed here this whole, we've stayed here this whole night. We are trying to listen.
And we don't want the vaccine, so if this video makes it anywhere, we don't.
And, and that should be your choice. This is America. I don't have a problem with that.
For now, it's our choice.
But you can still fight for it. Don't give up, don't give up on America. You know, when.
Mrs. Skirito, can I ask a question? It's not just for the board, it's for the superintendent and.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know plenty of faculty and staff in the district who side with us, but are actually scared to even voice their opinions or voice their side, because they are scared of losing their jobs. So I would like to know what the repercussions are for the faculty and staff, even administration within Hop Hog, if they were to align and speak locally?
When you say what, what the repercussions are, I asked this at work today. I'm in real estate, as you know.
Yeah.
They know you very well.
Well.
Exactly. But long story short, so I went to the office today. My dad is 81 years old, he's been doing real estate 42 years. He's having a hard time breathing, so I took my mask off with my dad. I got reprimanded as well, okay? Because I'm in the office. I am man, I'm licensed by the state of New York. I don't have a choice in matter. I go into a house that's not air conditioning, I have to wear a mask. That's the requirement. I don't like it, but I have to provide for my family. Yes, I like my community, but my family does come first, and I'm, I'm not gonna shy away from that. So if anybody in the school started saying they don't wanna wear a mask, I'm not gonna get, not gonna call the mask police on them. We're gonna try to figure a way around it.
There's no such thing as a mask, so the mask is like, why do you even say?
Hi, did you guys not know my story? I, I talked about it, which is going to kind of why I'm back up here. I don't want this to come off as a personal attack on any of you. Some of you guys I've worked with over the years, so I know you guys are trying to work for it. So now I'm asking, what can we do to get more effective? Because I know I get in trouble. When I tried to do it where I was teaching, I was reprimanded. But what can we do together to get our voices? Can the superintendents come together and be a full force? If you, Massapequa, Comac, and all of them stood up to Cuomo together and says, united, we are standing against this, if we have strength in numbers, what would be effective? Because I don't wanna just blow smoke somewhere. I don't wanna just be ineffective and be noise or heckle. I want results. So if you help tell me how to get results, I will focus my energy to that, so we are efficient together. Can the superintendents on Long Island stand up to Cuomo together? That's like a question I'm asking. Can the superintendents?
I, I can't answer that. I, I don't see how, because you're state-funded, and you, you, if you close down a school, you and I both know, we've worked many events together. I, I want my kid in school. I, I don't want somebody shutting down and sending me to a different district.
But you're okay with that, just writing to shut up?
I, I'm not okay. I'm not gonna give up fighting, and once again, I'm speaking for myself.
When no one's, when no one's fighting back against that, only Massapequa is. He's using our children as.
So is Massapequa still wearing masks? They are, so I, I.
Oh, Cuomo's, Cuomo's gonna do this, Cuomo's gonna do that. You can't do that. You can't take that approach anymore. It doesn't work. And you take letters over?
They don't work.
Then help me.
They don't work. Show me a letter that works.
So, so why would you guys, why would you say you would be writing letters now, after the vaccine?
He changed the mask mandate for outside. There was a lot of letters sent for that. I'm, I'm assuming that has to do with it. So I think letters, maybe you do work a little bit, they tell your community that you're fighting.
Mrs. Vasquez, you, you have every right to keep writing letters. My personal opinion, I think it's a waste of time, okay?
That's your personal opinion?
That's correct. You had asked me.
It's not the same opinion of everybody on this board, or everybody in this community. And other schools, many other schools, you'll see, they're older, have done that, and we think sideways. And that's the biggest problem, is that there was zero communication until the very end of the weekend, and this is not the one you must be, or at all. It actually falls, unfortunately, my apologies, on Dr. O'Hara, is that it's literally a complete insipid, the lack of communication and the fault of policy. You might believe that the, you know, letter is, is useless, because someone should know people look at it in a better way, or might not even look at it. But when you have people sitting there who have zero power whatsoever, even though you might not really have that much yourself, the district has been waiting for people to stand up for them, even if it's in the matter of sending out a letter. Not today, oh, we can have late, but in the beginning, why, I believe this is, why are we the last in line? Why are we the last? Why are we the first on all the districts to jump on and stand up for it? Instead of just appeasing us now, or we can have late? Why do we not have a superintendent or assistant superintendent who has the balls to jump on in line with the other people on Long Island? I think that's it. And the lack of communication sends the whole community at the, like, this is very much, um, it makes us uneasy. There's a lot of unrest, because there is no one appearing to fight for our children. Not saying you're not, but appearing to fight for our children. And so even if it's just a facade, or even if a person speaks that all the way, but why are we giving this, we can have late? Why do we not have a superintendent? Dr. Murphy, with all the respect, I sure tell God that you've got the sense to start standing up for it, because you're gonna have a lot of problems in September if we start falling in line, and you don't start fighting now for the rest of this community. Just that.
Now, we would like to know what the survey, conservative, yeah, I'd love to see it.
All right, hang, hang on, guys, just, it's hard for us to hear you, so come forward if you wanna speak. Were you done? I'm sorry.
Well, I would like to know, then, is there something effective that could be done? Like, could we have Dr. O'Hara and Dr. Murphy, since he's coming on, reach out to other districts and try to band together? Could we get something with all the superintendents standing up together? Because I do believe if enough stood up as one, then Cuomo could not hurt us. Yes, if one or two, it's easy to shoot down, but there's strength in numbers. And I think it would be more effective if we all came together. If you went to Smithtown, many parents feel the same way. Maybe you can get that superintendent. Comac, if you get other people in our like-minded communities together, then we might actually be like, enough is enough, and stop it. Can we ask that he reaches out then, or the board reaches out to other boards, and maybe as Long Island communities, we come together? Or if you have a suggestion? Like, what can we do and what would be, get effective results?
I think what Jesse's do, I, I, I think you gotta, action speaks better than words. And this is my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, I have to emphasize that. I think it's fantastic you guys are here tonight. But we're not the people that can make those changes. The people that can make those changes are paid politicians in a blue state that love control. I hate it, I hate it, I hate it. But if we're not gonna bond together, and they keep allowing us to divide, you're gonna get nowhere. We can write 100,000 letters.
That's why I'm asking, if the superintendents got together, if we unite, how can we unite more and be effective?
I, I, I don't think there's enough people. I, I think you have to get more people than that. I, I think if you saw what happened with the election, unless you're gonna make a, a 2 o'clock in the morning drop, y- y- you're not gonna get enough votes. You have to get the people out. Grassroots routine is the way to do it. This is what makes America great and proud. Nothing can never be overcome. You just have to get the people together and keep passing the word. I, I really believe that. My mom was a big smoker when I was growing up, and I hated it. But the tobacco industry had, for the longest time, the biggest, they had all the commercials, they had everything on the, the newspapers, the magazines. Years later, people said, "This is disgusting. People are dying of lung cancer, this is terrible." And look, people fought back. I never thought I'd see that day, but it, it happened. So, you know, I, I know one of, one of the parents had said, "We look at our kids." I tell my kid to be a fighter and to be a leader, okay? Sometimes it is okay to follow, to help and listen to other people's opinion, because if you're only opinionated, you're not gonna ever listen to somebody.
100%. You have to listen to the other side to understand where they're coming from. I could respectfully disagree with you.
Yes.
But you have to hear them at least.
100% correct. God gave us two ears and one mouth. We're supposed to listen twice as often as we talk. Sometimes we talk so much, we don't listen, okay? I think the people up in our, and I won't speak for the six members, I know, in my heart, we feel a lot the same, okay? But once again, we have to come together and figure better ways. I, I, I think the negative approach is, is always the toughest, because that's what they want.
It just turns people off, and you shut down. That's why I was trying to ask for the most effective ways to actually do it. Okay? If you get anything, please let us know.
I think gathering, gathering groups, you know, I, I think coming to these meetings and gathering groups and getting the word out is never a bad thing. I think you guys see tonight that we've, we've, we've listened.
You didn't put a timeline or anything, I was surprised, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for attentively listening to all of us.
Yeah, I, I think it's great we do it. You have to keep fighting. And, and if there's one thing you can teach your child or anybody, is to keep on fighting. That's what made America.
It brought my daughter. She was happy to come. She went to the rally. She's willing to do something.
Yeah. And I, I think it's fantastic, and she did fantastic there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa, you listen to everybody here. I just wanted to say, I think she's absolutely right. You guys need to make a stance, and Nassar has lifted the mask mandate for the real estate agents, I'm, I'm almost sure.
No, ma'am.
Well, I.
Control by libor. I mean, you could be incorrect. I'm not gonna argue with you, but you're incorrect.
Well, I am correct.
Okay.
But anyway, what I wanna say is, you guys do need to make a stance, because you guys are the backbone of this, of the whole school district, and for you to reach out to other ones who are feeling the same way you are, afraid that no one's standing up with you, you might find yourself very wrong. You might find out that these other school districts are very much willing to stand up and fight with you. Especially those who have taken the stance already, like your Comac, like the Massapequa, the Patch Hog. Reach out to them and say, that's all I can do, reach out and ask. They may wanna form an alliance. We need, if we don't get enough alliance against Cuomo, us, we're not gonna do it. Because people are afraid to get up. You have to stand up, and you have to try at least to see if somebody will stand with you. And you know what? Take your mask off. It's time. I've taken mine off, and I am a grandma. I'm not afraid.
I think you have every, I think you have every right to do that.
When my family was sick with COVID, I took care of them.
I think you have every right to do that.
And I have autoimmune diseases. I, I'm suppressed, so I don't care. I think it's a bunch of crap. It's political, and I'm done with it. When my little grandson, five years old, gets off a bus, and I said, "Did you take your mask off during, during lunch break, or when you're going outside?" And he tells me, "No, Grandma." You know what I have to do? I have to have the vaccine. Five years old. What are you teaching them? I've had enough of this, and I'm not letting anybody scare me into wearing a mask. Take your mask off. Nassar said you don't have to wear it. Stand up, get a set of balls, go out and fight, because I'll fight. I'll be the first one standing in front of you.
That's good.
So let's do it.
Hello. Well, my name is Jose Vasquez. I'm here to advocate for the kids. I understand, like you said, your hands are tied, but you're the only one with an olive branch to reach out to us and inform us with information on how to go about it, right? What you been doing this whole time? Why, two weeks before the school end, Dr. O'Hara, why are you dragging your feet? Do you know it was two weeks to stop the spread? And here we are still advocating for our kids? And where's Dr. Murphy? What route are you going to leave him with? I don't understand this, like, the age group for kids are zero to eight and have a 99% survival rate of COVID with or without a mask, social distancing, or the new experimental drug, which, by the looks of it, that's why you're promoting and advocating? Why you not providing health research, anything else? Why are we pushing this vaccine? It's insane. The nurse even said it herself. Come fall is the food season. Is this all a diversion to replace masks with jabs? Like, which is the end game? Like, we all here, a year later, we are fully aware of the signs. Why are we not following the signs? Why are we still listening to politicians and waiting for their marching orders? What are we waiting for? You keep saying that we need to stand together, and you literally told everybody here that they should write a letter, and now you're saying letters don't work? Like, that's very confusing. Which approach do we take? You guys are the ones to lead. Like the lady said, show us the way. If you guys stand up and take your mask, trust me, everybody on that YouTube and social media will follow through with all of you guys, regardless of a job or not. The school continues. You might be here this year or next year. You, you out the door. You going somewhere else, live your life. Why are you not advocating for the kids now? And if that's the case, give up the title. Why are you still holding it? Why are you dragging your feet? Two weeks till the school ends, don't you think it's a little fishy? What's your end game? What is it, Dr. O'Hara? What is your end game? What are you trying to do to advocate for the kids? You know the kids are the least to be infected with COVID and have the highest survival rate of it, 99.9. Why are we advocating a jab, mask, and social distancing? It makes no sense. We come a long way to get to this point where we are now, and instead of taking advantage of these things that we could all help out each other, like you said, numbers do work, then why are you guys stiffing us away? Avoiding us? You're saying it causes division, but it does cause division, because it's true. I guarantee you, 60% of all of you are vaccinated, right? Or not? But yet, you're still choose to wear a mask? What is it for? On stage, I seen people not wearing masks, standing next to each other and choose and pick which ones to wear. Like, it's either mask off or mask on. What are we still doing? It's 90-degree weather. The Hub Department did not tell anybody or inform any of you guys to make kids wear masks. It's insane. They're the least groups to get affected. Masks were supposed to protect you guys, the adults, from getting sick or getting the kids sick. How did that change? How did we go from stopping the spread to flying in the curve, to finding the cure, to vax and masks? And now, on all society, to allow it to happen on school grounds? Schools is for education. They got a hospital and clinics if you want to get the COVID or whatever it is. Why are you allowing it to come to this school? Do you know the peer pressure that causes on kids? The social pressure on top of all this that's going on? Now you have surrogation happening in school. These are the haves and these are the have-nots. Is this, this is where it's leading to? And I'm from the city. I don't know nothing about the suburbs, and I came over here thinking this is a better chase, and now it's, it's becoming the same thing. It's insane. Leadership starts from the top, and I'm staring at leadership right here. And I know, like you guys said, your hands are tied. How about us? Our hands been behind yours this whole time. Why do you keep saying your hands are tied? You guys are the voice of us, and you keep saying your hands are tied. Tied from where? You're tying them yourself? Who's tying them? Because Cuomo quoted himself, he can't force anybody. It's up to the school district. Aren't you guys the school district? That's a question. Are you?
We're the school district, sure.
So then, so is he wrong for what he stated?
Mr. Vasquez, do you pay taxes every year?
Of course I do.
Why?
Why? Why wouldn't we?
I don't believe in them.
Who?
Me.
Believe in what?
You're a smart intelligent man, sir. In other words, there are state rules that we have to follow and stuff.
I understand that. I understand. I understand all that. State rules, we've all been following state rules.
I love to stay with you guys, but we have to have some conversation. I have a family as well to go home to. I know you have children as well. If you want to ask me a question that I can gladly help you on, I'm more than happy to partake and help you guys to the best of my. I'm not going to speak for the other board members, okay? My name has been everywhere. My phone number's out there. So if you can't reach me, that's your problem, because my name's been out there many years, okay? I agree on your side. I don't agree when you start saying that we're not good parents.
No, I never, I never said that. I said, if we all truly believe the same thing, then we should all stand together, right or wrong? Aren't we here to support each other?
You asked me a question, and I gave you the answer, Mr. Vasquez. And like I said, I think you're doing the right thing, okay? And I'm not speaking for the, as the board, I'm speaking as Rob Scarito. I think you're doing the right thing. I believe in democracy. I do think if you keep fighting, sir, you can overcome anything. I think the way the country is right now, they want division, sir. I think the masks are a way of controlling us.
Surrogation. They practice the surrogation.
I think Cuomo played a joke on us on Friday with Zucker. I think that they put him on.
It's not a joke, because first of all, let me ask you a question. When he says mass inspector, what is a mass inspector?
I have no idea, sir.
Exactly. That's a made-up term. There's no such thing as a mass inspector. And Mr. O'Hara, are we here for a margarine?
Mr. Vasquez, push the microphone out of the way. It's hard to hear you. No, don't you use the microphone.
It's echo.
I just don't understand.
Don't use the microphone. You talk to us.
I just don't understand what's called a fear margarine. Like, are we here to advocate for all our kids and do it together?
100%.
Or are we going to pick and choose?
Should never pick and choose.
We're going to do it, but the governor's saying no. But then the governor's saying it's up to the school board. But then the governor's saying, oh, I can't force anybody to do anything. So who is it?
It's a lot of things, Mr. Vasquez. It's not only masks, sir. It's state mandated testing. It's a lot of things. But once again, you have to keep fighting. I know you believe in democracy. If you believe in democracy, you have to fight, sir.
We've all been saying, you keep saying, fight. I get it, fight.
I think you do.
What other alternative? I think we're going to try everything in the whole playbook. Which other alternative do you have? What inside formation do you have to provide?
I don't have any magic beans. I don't have any magic beans, sir. I'm just like you, sir.
Like, how long can we do it? The school year is literally over in two weeks, and we still not trying to advocate for our kids?
I can promise you, if you give up, it'll never change, sir.
Say that again?
I said, if you give up, it'll never change. So you got to keep fighting.
That's why we still here.
But I don't think anybody has any magic beans, sir. For over a year now, over a year now, we've been wearing masks, sir. I don't know about what your positioning.
You choose to wear a mask, because I haven't worn a mask this whole year.
Sir, I choose to wear a mask because what I'm trying to do is abide by the thing so I can keep fighting for my kids. I also have a state-mandated job that I don't want to lose my license. I provide for my family. I'll tell you again, my family comes before you, okay?
I totally agree with that.
I don't know what you do for a living.
The stern establishment, you could, everybody practices.
Right.
That's guarantee, but now.
I haven't said one thing that you're not wearing a mask. I haven't made a comment. I think it's a choice, and that's me personally.
And we all should be given a choice, and the kids.
And I agree with you. But you said it before, sir, we shouldn't shame anybody else. If some person chooses to wear a mask, it should be the same thing.
It's optional.
There you go. And I have no, I have no problem with that, sir. We're on the same page.
But yet again, I get it, that you're first, you're telling us to write a letter, but then you said that it's.
I didn't say write a letter, sir. I never said write a letter. I don't believe I ever said write a letter. I said, I said, action speaks louder than words. I think that's my.
Yeah, I responded to the request from someone to write a letter.
Yes.
That's where I got the confusion.
But once again.
It's kind of confusing which route to take, because it's like, we haven't tried.
You have a choice. You go to the voting booth. You got to keep trying things. I'm not saying deny. But I, if I had a magic bean, I'd gladly give it to you. I don't have it. But you know what? I teach my kids, you don't look for a magic bean. You keep looking. You keep fighting. And I'm sorry. I apologize if that's not the answer you want, that it's an easy answer, that I can take out of my pocket. It's a book answer. It's not a book kind of question.
No, of course it's not.
This is my first pandemic. I got to be honest with you. I haven't been through many before. So I'm going to fight. I was home for three months, no work, and you know what? I told my kids, we'll do it. I have two kids in college. I'll figure it out. I adjust, adapt, okay?
And we adapted to the change.
But I'm going to keep fighting. I think we have similar philosophies, but I think, once again, you're not asking us a question we can answer. If you ask me a question, I'll gladly answer, but I can't answer something that has no answer, sir. I can't.
Of course. All right, thank you for your time.
You're very, don't fool. Sorry.
The solution is that you should send out a survey to parents, like North Country Word is, asking the effects on them and their children, on the pandemic, on school, national school, everything. Maybe they take those answers and forward it along to King Cuomo, and maybe that'll make a difference.
So you honestly, you honestly believe, you honestly believe.
I don't know what kids are going through.
You honestly believe, Mrs. Vasquez, that King Cuomo cares about us?
No, I don't.
Because I don't.
People do.
I don't.
And even Democrats cannot get to him.
Yeah, where has that gotten? Where has that gotten?
The whole world is watching. The whole world is watching. Every other state.
And it's a mockery.
If they had national coverage, what happened over the weekend? If they knew the experience of what our kids are going through, maybe they could do something. Because our kids are suffering. I clearly gave one small experience that my voters did through. That's not the only one. Middle Country wants to know if your students are going through, do you?
I want it to change. I want it to change.
It's a good start.
If you think that's the magic bean, let's do it.
I don't think it's the magic bean. I think it's a good start. If you guys understand where your community is and where the students in your community are, how they're being affected, because it's, I heard it's been such a successful year. Find out. Find out. Because I think you'll be surprised. I really do.
I think, I'm not coming from an accusatory place at all. I'm just putting together what this couple is saying, plus what I'm hearing. I think you're right. Mrs. Crida, Dr. Murphy, Dr. O'Hara, and the rest of you. You are bound in the same respect as any of us. However, going along with our saying is that you are the leaders of our community. So, if you need to consider change, perhaps something even as simple as a questionnaire will allow the community to feel that they have, they're basically hurt. There are ways, I think we all know, there's so many who have not spoken, there are people out there who don't have the courage to speak. Or they don't know how, they don't have an outlet, or they are scared.